All right, we're live.
All right, good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the May 25th, 2021 virtual board meeting for the Mathacton School District Board of Directors. Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice for all.
The public is hereby advised of the audio and video recording of this meeting for the purposes of rebroadcasting. Given the need to conduct this board meeting in a virtual environment, the board required members of the public to make comments, wanting to make comments on agenda items or during courtesy of the Florida preregister by five o'clock today. We'll do our roll call for attendance. Ms. Kankrow?
Yeah.
Ms. Drummond?
I'm here.
Ms. Hull?
Here.
Mr. McGinnis? Mr. Navarette?
Here.
Mr. or Ms. Purdue?
Here.
Ms. Reese?
Here.
Mr. Winters?
Here.
And recognition of guests and scheduled speakers, Dr. Zerbi.
Thank you very much, Madam President. This evening, Dr. Gravenese, our interim principal at Mathacton High School, has shared with me the list of M-Awards for seniors this evening. I want to share the list, and we let you know that we are very proud of the achievements of all of our students. This year, 156 members of the class of 2021 have earned M-Awards for academic excellence. Our student board representatives, Samara Goodridge and Chris Spleitzer, are among them. These members of the class of 2021 will receive an M-Award in their graduation packet for achieving a 93% or greater grade point average for the 2021 school year. Following graduation, these students will attend various higher education institutions such as Yale, Princeton, Brown, the University of Pennsylvania, Penn State, Drexel and Temple, or begin their career or plan to serve our country in the military. Congratulations to these M-Award recipients and to the entire class of 2021. These names will be posted to the district website for everyone to admire. The next item on the agenda is the Mathacton Award of Excellence. Mr. Scott Hensel from First Student and Mr. Zach Lindman from Aramark are here to present the Award of Excellence for the month of May 2021. And let me just get to that. And who's going first here? Is it, I believe it's Mr. Lindman, is that correct?
That's correct.
All right. Mr. Lindman, you want to say a few words about our first awardee? Are you on? I can't see you. Is Mr. Lindman there? I thought he was in there earlier.
He was. Now he's back.
Okay.
His mic isn't working.
Okay. So with that said, Vera Orich has been with the Aramark and Mathacton for well over a decade, and as a longtime employee deserves recognition for continuous hard work and effort. When Aramark and the Food Services Team first came back to a virtual school setting in September 2020, Vera was instrumental in helping to get the district curbside distribution program off the ground. As a cafeteria manager at Arrowhead Elementary School, she used the extensive food service experience and her lifetime leadership experience to work with staff through all of the pivot points that occurred. From menu alterations to student diet accommodations to staffing challenges and early days with late nights, Vera is a one-of-a-kind employee, manager, and best of all, leader. Congratulations, Vera. Zach, do we have the microphone working yet? All right. Mr. Bricker? You want to take the next one?
Sure, my microphone is working.
Good.
I don't know if I want to have Zachs come on. The next person is Tina Cusimano. Tina Cusimano is an Aramark Cafeteria Manager at Woodland Elementary. Her work ethic and organization are second to none. With a full year of changes, Tina can be counted on to take the reins and get the job done. Most notable was keeping all the curbside distribution packing neat and organized, no easy task. From the beginning of this year where her responsibilities changed weekly and sometimes daily, she has always managed to put her full force into whatever she was working on. She is a great asset and one that has a bright future with Mathacton and Aramark. Congratulations.
Congratulations, Tina. Next, we have Maria.
Maria Shams. Maria has been a longtime Aramark employee and before that with Mathacton itself. Her positive demeanor, pleasant attitude, and constant work ethic are some of her most valuable qualities. Maria's role include running out breakfast carts, running our breakfast cart program at Skyview and our Cola, prepping alongside her coworkers during the day, and running a cash register during lunch. She's an outstanding employee, and despite a pandemic situation throughout the school year that has created numerous changes, manages not only to complete her own tasks, but also assists wherever it's needed in the cafeterias. Truly excellent teammate.
Congratulations, Maria. Next, we have James Pendergrass. James, we have, also, we have Scott Hensel on the, is your mic working, Scott?
I believe so. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. It's all yours.
Excellent. Thank you, Dr. Zerbi. So through a difficult and unpredictable year, Jim has shown to be a tremendous driver for First Student. His knowledge of the area and willingness to jump on different routes any day of the week has helped us tremendously when transporting the students up in the Mathacton School District, safely, I do add. Jim has not missed a day of work this year and was always willing to help out when we were shorthanded. Thank you, Jim.
Thank you, Jim. Hasn't missed a day of work. That's outstanding. Next, we have Steve.
Steve Arnwoodian. So Steve has been with First Student since 2014, when First Student came over and took over from Mathacton School District Transportation. His calm demeanor, friendliness, and experience makes him a perfect fit to be a school bus driver. Not only is Steve a school bus driver, but he also works as a trainer with First Student. He works one-on-one with the new driver candidates, helping prepare them for their CDL and life behind the wheel of a yellow school bus full of children. Thanks, Steve.
Congratulations, Steve. And next, we have Art.
And lastly, we have Art. Arthur is the AM dispatcher here with First Student, but his role extends far beyond that. In a very tough year where staffing has been a challenge, Art always finds a way to get the children to and from school safely. When Art is not in dispatch, he is out on the road. His strong work ethic and flexibility has made him a great asset to First Student. Thank you, Art.
Thank you, Art. Congratulations. Congratulations to all of our Aramark and First Student employees. They are instrumental in allowing us to pull off a lot of different things here this past school year. Thank you, Scott, and thank you, Zach, for your leadership in making all this work, and your partnership with the Mathacton School District. Thank you so much. Next, we have, on the agenda, under guests and scheduled speakers, we have Dr. Sergini on a retirement recognition. Dr. Sergini?
Thank you, Dr. Zerbi, members of the Board of School Directors and members of our Mathacton community. We often refer to the staff of Mathacton School District as our Mathacton family. Our Mathacton family members regularly spend years and even decades in dedicated service to the education of our students. I'm honored to recognize this evening those members of our Mathacton family who either have or will be concluding their professional service with us during the 2020-2021 school year. Together, these members of our Mathacton family represent a collective total of 542 years of service to Mathacton School District. The good work they've done will continue to ripple out not only into our local community, but indeed throughout the entire world as our Mathacton alumni become the next generation of leaders. On behalf of everyone in the entire Mathacton community, I extend our profound appreciation and gratitude to our retirees, and I wish them all the very best of health and happiness in the years ahead. Congratulations to Mimi Barbuto, Chris Boyle, Gail Brown, Pat Givannis, Butch Langheim, Bernie Gribb, Mary Mandia, Lori Andrews, Nancy Leno Weaver, Patty McGinnis, Diane Malin, Ralph Merja, Bob McNally, Jill Nickerson, Kathy O'Connell, Linda Wilkinson, Bruce Vogel, Barb Valerio, Michelle Sinnet, Janice Stickley, Linda Phipps, Diane Seberger, and Frank Buno. Congratulations and best wishes to all of our retirees. Thank you, Dr. Zerbi.
Dr. Sergini, thank you to all of our retirees. That's a lot of years of experience that are leaving us, and certainly there'll be challenging shoes to fill, but that's where your job comes in, to help recruit us, the talent that we need. But that'll certainly take years, and it'll, these are some very smiling and appreciative faces that are leaving the district. Hope they come back and say hello, or better yet, they come back and they do some interim work for us or substitute, or, you know, all the things that we would love them to do. So with that said, I hope, I wish them all the very, very best. That, there ends the list of guests and scheduled speakers for this evening. I'll turn the microphone back over to Madam President.
Thank you, Dr. Zerbi. For reports, we have our committee reports attached to the agenda. For DEI, Ms. Purdue and Ms. Drummond? Ms. Purdue?
Do we have an update for tonight?
I think the update was provided at the work session meeting by Dr. Campbell. Is that correct, Ms. Drummond?
Yes, I believe.
I think that would be the update. Do you have anything else, Ms. Purdue?
No, we don't have anything else. There's a committee meeting, a full DI committee meeting scheduled for tomorrow, and so that's the update. We'll touch base later. And the survey was rendered and completed, so we'll have more updates provided next month.
Great. Look forward to that. Thank you. Intermediate unit, Ms. Reese?
Um, I'll be brief tonight. As always, we're kind of a day ahead of schedule here, so we have our May meeting tomorrow. However, we, of course, did meet in April. Regular board business, but just to, I need to just say a thanks to the president of the board of the MCIU, Mara Bari, whoever. If anyone's lucky enough to have met her in any school board event, she is an upper Marion School Board member, and she is not running for reelection, and she has been just an incredible, incredible board president at the MCIU. So we did have an exec session just to discuss the fact that we need a new cabinet at the MCIU board. The only other major update is Head Start was able to procure a federal bid for funds for a playground, playgrounds, which was fantastic. And for those, I know I haven't talked about Harrisburg in a while. Probably Mr. Winters or Mr. Ryan spoke to you last about Harrisburg, but for a refresher to some of you, the MCIU took over running the Harrisburg School District, and the superintendent of that school district spoke to us again, and he's just an incredible gentleman, and they are moving in the right direction in that district. Um, and July, there will be a golf outing. I will share that information with all of you as a fundraiser, and I will update you next month on our May meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Reese. Then, moving on to the North Monco Technical Career Center. I don't know if that's you or Ms. Drummond this month?
It can be either. Do you want to start, Liz, or finish?
And I'll pick up.
Okay. North Monco met on May 17th. We did have an exec session beforehand, just because we wound up kind of stealing my thunder from the regular meeting. The IU did come to terms with their teachers' contracts, so we just needed to discuss that prior to the meeting. 10 to 12 students are all back in some capacity, and the NOTD testing went very, very well. The tech center did not have to give the NOTD testing, but their students really wanted to take it, and I had told you before they had done very well in the written, but now they took the hands-on, and 77% were proficient or advanced. And one of the reasons they wanted to do that is because it allows them to qualify for state licensing and credentials, and that's pretty remarkable how well they did, especially considering that at the end of last year, they were also out of the building. So kudos to the staff and the students there. There is lunch. For anyone who has not had an opportunity to pick up lunch or bakery on Wednesdays or Thursdays, please order online. It is going well. And then finally, we had a really, really unique presentation, and two of the teachers took on a really extraordinary project, and I will share with the board what they did in more detail. But two teachers did a walking-in-their-shoes writing assignment for the full-time students there, and they hope to continue it with the part-time students next year. And it just helped them understand each other more when you talk about diversity, diversity, inclusion, and equity, and the struggles that many have had with the last year and COVID. And it was just, it was one of, when you talk about social, emotional learning, it was, all of us were speechless, some of the responses that these teachers procured from their students. And I know Liz and I were both really moved by it, and we did, we do plan to share it with the fact and administrators, and in case any of our teachers are interested in doing something similar. But I really want to give a shout out to Ms. Lucas and Ms. Schmidt. One is the cosmetology teacher at the tech center, and one is a social studies teacher. And then finally, there was a grand opening for the Mechatronics Lab, and for those of you unaware of that, there's a waiting list on that program, in that program. And to have a new lab and to be able to open that up to more students, it's a really phenomenal program that will get them far in their education. And we are not in person yet back at the IU, one of the, excuse me, at the, well, at the IU or the tech center. One issue at the tech center is our room is being used by the health students, because the health students can't go to some of their hospitals and things like that to go work in. So I think that's it, unless, Liz, there's anything you want to add, or I forgot.
Yeah, I would just add that the plan in the fall is a five-day return, full return. In the meantime, through the remainder of the year, there will still be masking and the protocol. And I would also just reiterate, Andrea, what you said about the walking-in-their-shoes presentation. It was, it was an anonymous exercise designed to foster empathy and share personal experiences. So people shared, you know, students shared their experiences about poverty and dyslexia and parents with addiction and feeling alone. And, you know, just, you know, like a whole spectrum of emotions. So I think it would be a really valuable thing to, you know, to build from in our district and in other districts. So we're anxious to share that exercise with you. And yeah, that's all I have.
Thank you both. And now, for the last time, with our student board representatives' report, Ms. Serena Goodrich and Mr. Chris Spleitzer.
Okay, so I have a couple of things to say. First, I'm going to start off with the AP test ended this previous week. Now, I personally did not take any APs or AP tests this year, but I know it's a huge relief for everybody, especially with the year we've had to be done. So congratulations to all students who took AP tests and took any AP course, really, and we're all hoping for fives for you. This past Friday was the senior celebration at Linfield National Golf Club, and I was there. I'm pretty sure I saw Chris there. But it was a great time. I really think that whoever planned it, I know it was the student council, it was everybody. They did a really good job for the circumstances that we were under. So I just want to thank everybody for putting on such a nice event. It was really a great time, and it was a nice, like, final send-off kind of thing. And then also today, we had the Lieutenant Governor, John Fetterman, go live talking about the One Book One School. Now, I, me and Chris personally will not be reading this book, because we won't be attending Mathacton High School next year, but I think it was really cool that they got him live on Zoom today. So that was really nice for the, you know, upcoming students that will be reading the book. So sports news, the girls and boys lacrosse both started the district tournament last week, or last week. They had their first round games on Tuesday, which they both won, but both unfortunately lost in their second round game. But I want to say congratulations to the girls and boys lacrosse team on such a great season. They both were so successful. For softball, we had our first round districts game yesterday, and we won. So now we play tomorrow at Quakertown. So if you know any softball players, send them a good luck tomorrow in their game. And then finally, I just wanted to say thank you. I know Chris is his own words, but I wanted to say thank you so much for the opportunity these past few years to just come and sit on the panel and get to talk about my classmates. I really appreciate it. It was a really great opportunity, so I just want to say thank you for everything. And I'm well done. Chris, you can go.
Right, all right. Starting with sports news, so Boys and Girls Track and Field concluded officially on the 15th of May after a packed championship meet. Mathacton performed admirably and had multiple qualifying athletes for districts, which were this past weekend. And in fact, we had a couple of female athletes, Coco Dunham and Maddie Eastmere, who will be competing in states this coming weekend, which is a fantastic achievement for them, so congratulations. Keystone examinations occurred Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday of last week. The high school operated asynchronously fully those three days last week. And frankly, these weeks marked the last couple of weeks for our seniors. Graduation rapidly approaches on the 10th of June. The week after next will be the final week for the seniors, and those Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday will be fully graduation practice, with Thursday being the 10th. All in all, these events largely conclude what has certainly been a tumultuous and unique year, providing many challenges for the students, administrators, teachers at Mathacton. All of these members of the Mathacton community have come out of this year on top, in my opinion. I think they're all looking forward to a 2022 full of normalcy. And I'd just like to say thank you to the Mathacton community for all of your perseverance, and here's to a brighter future for this fantastic district. Thank you very much. It's been a pleasure.
Thank you, Chris, and thank you, Serena, for your service to this board and this community. Really appreciate it.
Wasn't expecting to get quite so choked up on that. We're going to miss you guys.
Miss you guys, too.
So now, moving on, we do not have a foundation report this evening, so for communications, Ms. Kelly?
Thank you, Madam President, and good evening, everyone. The month of May was a celebratory one across the district. We celebrated Teacher Appreciation Week, which began May 3rd through May 7th. To end that week, members of the board and the Mathacton administration rise the staff at each building with a water ice celebration at lunchtime. We thank our teachers for all they do to prepare the next generation of learners and for sharing their talents with our school community today and every day. And Dr. Zerbi, would you please put the video up? Thank you. So the video that you're going to see is going to go with this next story. Also, earlier this month, the district hosted a surprise award ceremony to celebrate the nursing department on May 12th, which was also School Nurse Day. Our school nurses are Kelly Benaric, Joni Cosgriff, Annette Kramer, Jody Latanzi, Valerie Lozniak, Kim McDonald, Cheryl Pfeifer, Mary Thomas, and Kathy Thompson. Our nurses were presented, each of them, with awards for excellence in nursing and certificates of appreciation for their extraordinary efforts during these extraordinary times. Mrs. Pfeifer, the district's Nursing Services Coordinator, also received the Leadership Award for Excellence in Nursing. Members of the Board of School Directors, Dr. Zerbi, Dr. Engstead, and our Mathacton School District Principals were also in attendance for this event. So thank you to our nurses again for all that you do for our families and our students. Dr. Zerbi, you can take the video down now. Thank you. The new Arrowhead Element, oh, I'm not done, guys, but yes. The new Arrowhead Elementary School is taking shape. Last week, members of the board took a tour of the construction site for the new Arrowhead School. Ms. Drummond, Ms. Kankrow, Mr. Navarette, and Ms. Purdue were in attendance, along with Dr. Zerbi, Mr. Jones, and representatives from KCBA Architects and Fedavia. The new Arrowhead is being built on the campus of the current elementary school. The new school is scheduled to open in the fall of 2022. For additional information about the construction project and to learn about the progress, go to mathacton.org/arrowheadconstruction. Also, thanks to the generosity of our school community, Mathacton School District has received $6,611.65 through Giant Food Stores Feeding School Kids Initiative. We hosted a check presentation with Mr. Kevin Walsh. He's the store manager of the Egypt Road Giant at Woodland this afternoon. Students in Woodland's fourth-grade class read impact statements on the importance of nutrition on learning during the event. The giant donation will help support our wonderful backpack program, which is grown to provide students in needs with supplemental food and non-food items. Several people have been very instrumental in making the backpack program what it is today, which is success. They include our board vice president, Ms. Drummond, our interim high school principal, Dr. Gravenise, and Eagleville Office Assistant and Volunteer, Mrs. Gabby Winters. So for some highlights from today's events, just go to our website, mathacton.org. And finally, I know you're loving all this great news. Skipback Pharmacy is holding a vaccine clinic for those 12 and older at Mathacton High School tomorrow, May 26th, from 5:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. Enter from the main gym near the fields. Those interested may make an appointment. However, walk-ins will be accepted. Additional information and a link to schedule an appointment is on the district's website. Thank you.
Now we can clap. Well done, Ms. Kelly. Thank you.
Can we just end the meeting here? Sorry, no. It's always nice to end with something happy and on a high note, but we have work to do, too. Superintendent's report, Dr. Zerbi.
Thank you, Madam President. Aside from the advisements that are listed for your information, please know that due to an administrative error, actually on my part, we missed the placement of the approval, an action item for the full-day kindergarten. So I'd like to be able to put that on the agenda for the June voting meeting this coming month. So with that said, please anticipate that we will be able to answer questions at the work session in June if there are any that remain for the members of the board, and then we will place on and be sure to place on the action item for the June voting meeting for full-day kindergarten. That ends my report.
Thank you, Dr. Zerbi. Before we get to public comment on board action items, I did want to address one thing, because it is relative to one of our action items. I know there has been a lot of questions about when we will be returning to in-person meetings, so I just wanted to address that now and say that we have a plan that we are ironing out all the details on, but we will be returning to in-person board and committee meetings in July. As of right now, it looks like our committee meetings will be held at the LGI, the Large Group Instruction Area in the high school, and our board meetings will be held in the auditorium at our Cola to allow for adequate social distancing. We will be following the current guidance that's in place relative to mask usage. As of right now in Pennsylvania, masks are still required in indoor spaces, so that's what we'll be going with. But we will make adjustments to our practices at the in-person meetings as things continue to change. So as of right now, July, full details will be on our website, as they always are. But, you know, meetings, the time will always be the same, but the location will now actually be a physical location, not just a virtual one. And we will also continue to have the YouTube stream for our board and work sessions. So in addition to having the recordings of the board meetings available after the fact, we will have a live stream of the board meetings during the meeting. So hopefully, it's a good sign of things to come and a return to more normalcy here. So with that, we will now move on to public comment on board action items. So we will now take comment on matters that are to be decided upon as outlined on the agenda this evening. Again, we remind you to keep your comments to four minutes or less. If you preregistered to speak tonight, go ahead and raise your hand, and please introduce yourself with your name and municipality before you start speaking. I'm not seeing any hands. I'm not seeing any hands raised. Oh, there we go. Okay, I have Brian Earnshaw. Go ahead, Mr. Earnshaw, whenever you're ready.
Thank you, Brian Earnshaw, Lower Providence. My first two questions you answered about the full-day kindergarten vote and the resumption of in-person meetings. Regarding the board meeting minutes, at the end of the minutes for the work session, under courtesy of the floor, it states that the last line, Mr. McGinnis commented on virtual meeting increase in participation. I think that portion of minutes should be revisited. I don't think that fully reflects the comments made by Mr. McGinnis, which included, you know, response to a member of the public, which was, I view as inappropriate, including some use of very colorful language. I think that should be reflected in the minutes. Regarding the list of bills, follow up on a couple of questions I had asked at the Finance Committee meeting that had not been answered. Check number 199736 is a payment for natural gas service. And for this, check number 199775 is a payment for natural gas as well. Exact same building, the exact same time period. One check's made out to Exelon, the others to Pico. Just looking for confirmation, possibly a duplicate payment. There was a payment to Telatin for appraisal service, which I understand was for Shenondale. And I'd asked if anybody could provide the cumulative amount spent on the Shenondale tax appeal and litigation matter. And that was not answered. Let's see, there was a payment to... I think that was the answer, okay. And that was it on the list of bills. Regarding the Keystone Agreement, the copy of the minutes I downloaded showed say the agreement is extended through 2022, but the agreement says 2023. I guess that the Finance Committee meeting and that went unanswered as well, so if we could clarify that for me, I'd appreciate it. And that was all I had on the action items. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Earnshaw. Okay, anyone else for public comment on board action items? Jessica Bradbury, whenever you're ready. Ms. Bradbury, we can't hear you. Are you unmuted? Alright, so I'm going to... Whoops. Looks like you dropped from the meeting, but if you rejoin, I will bring you back in for public comment. So then next I have Chun-Ling Ma. Whenever you're ready.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Hi, Chun-Ling Ma, Worcester Township. Just want to comment on a few things of the action items. First one was the DEI program. I did some research on Dr. Bruce Campbell and I found out on internet, he is a social justice radical with a political agenda seeking to indoctrinate our kids with his personal ideology. I just don't know.
Pause you for a second there. Is there an action item for the DEI?
I saw it on your agenda, the DEI.
Yes, there was a DEI report, but I don't know if there is a voting item relative to DEI. I mean, you're welcome to make your comments at the end of the meeting during public comment, but I don't believe that there is anything that we are voting on this evening relative to Dr. Campbell and DEI.
Okay, alright, I'll wait for it.
I'm wrong. It's possible that I am missing it, but I'm not seeing it, so.
You're correct, Madam President.
Okay.
Alright, okay, I'll just wait until the curse of the floor. And also, like, the policy, is that also a voting item? I have a comment regarding the policy, second reading.
Yep.
That's a voting item?
That is a voting item.
Okay, alright. So can I recount my time?
I actually stopped the time while we were discussing this, so you're good.
Alright, thank you. So I saw the performance for the policy second reading, and there's a performance assessment of the superintendent under a bunch of scopes in terms like a PSSA scores, all that. But I don't know if there are criteria posted like for each scope, what level we should reach. And then in order to like evaluate whether the superintendent is meeting the mark, you know, whether we should continue hiring him, something like that. I just don't see something with the number or data. I only see the scope. So I just wonder if the board can answer me this question. And then we don't have anything on the curriculum, right, for the voting item, do we?
That's correct.
Okay, alright, that's all I can say, I guess, for now. Okay, thanks.
Okay, thank you so much.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, let's try again for Jessica Bradbury.
Hi, can you hear me now?
Yes, I can.
Alright, excellent. I switched to my phone. Sorry about that. Alright, Jessica Bradbury, Lower Providence Township. With regards to Agenda Item A, I'm so happy to hear we're returning to in-person meetings. And I'm hoping over the next couple of weeks, could you possibly clarify a few items? Does this mean that we'll have to be present in person in order to speak? And will we be discontinuing that 5:00 PM deadline in order, where we have to register in order to speak? I know that we have technology that has enabled remote participation and in-person participation for our students, so I'm hoping the board meetings will also enable remote participation as well. With regards to 14F, the Health and Safety Plan update, I think that's up for vote tonight. And as I'm reading it, it looks like we're intending the children to stay masked outdoors for the remainder of this year, as well as throughout the summer for any summer programs they may be participating in. Effective Friday, May 14th, 2021, the Montgomery County Office of Public Health is no longer requiring masking and face covering while individuals are participating in a high exertion outdoor activity such as sports and exercising, which I know was discussed last week for our older students. I believe that our younger students should also be permitted to remove their masks while they're outside engaged in exercise, like at recess or a gym class. Other public school districts have implemented this policy as well as local sports organizations. As we all know, the district took an extremely conservative approach with regards to returning our students to the classroom. And once again, we're watching our district take the slower following instead of leading position with regards to masking. So I would implore you not to make the same mistake twice. Please reconsider and follow the Montgomery County Office of Public Health guidance to allow our children to remove their masks when they're playing outdoors as the heat continues to rise. It still provides a choice for parents and children if they wish to continue to wear masks, and choice is an important freedom that we deserve. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And next I have Kristen Sherman. Whenever you're ready.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Hi, thank you, Kristen Sherman, Lower Providence. I just want to follow up with what Jessica Bradbury talked about. I'm concerned, I have a daughter who's in fourth grade, and it's gonna be 90 degrees tomorrow, and wearing a mask for a fourth grader and younger outside in that heat is just not safe. At least 10 other school districts have permitted children in the elementary school, their whole district. These districts include Perkyum and Valley, Springford North, and Colonial School District, Phoenixville School District, Radnor School District, Salderton, Lower Moreland, Boyer Town, and Pott Grove. All have allowed their children to remove their masks outside and during outdoor recess, I'm sorry, outdoor gym class and recess. I'm just curious as to why we aren't following the recommendations of the county, which is, was discussed or shared with Jessica Bradbury. Why are we not following them now, but we weren't asked? That doesn't make any sense to me. So I was just wondering if you could readdress that and maybe include kindergarten through 12th to remove their masks if they're outside for recess or doing class outside. Thank you.
Thank you. Next I have Joe Rittenhouse.
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Hey, Joe Rittenhouse, Lower Providence. I just very wanted to speak to the meeting back in person. I think it's awesome. I'm so glad we're about it. We're going back to it. I know that there was there was talk about how much it was a benefit to be virtual, and I completely agree when it comes to the use of both YouTube and Zoom in relation to the in-person meetings. And I guess I'm offering more so than asking a question. If, I wanted to just make sure that, like, those who don't feel comfortable or those who want to participate virtually, will they still have an avenue to ask questions? I know that YouTube and Zoom offer ways to engage in, like, so are we pre-registering for questions for people who want to speak virtually? And then maybe we, you know, someone will read the questions. Our only question is gonna be taken from people in attendance to the meeting. And I'm genuinely willing to help facilitate, if this is a technological thing, to help, you know, those parents or those families that don't feel comfortable coming back to an in-person meeting or simply just don't want to come back to have them still be able to participate. So I just hope the board would consider, like, hey, there are a lot of options available at the moment to get, to keep, you know, like, those hundreds and hundreds of parents who are listening, you know, now or after this, to be able to still engage with the meeting in real time. So yeah, if there's a solution to that, I just wish it'd be talked about. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Next I have Lauren Nalgin.
Lauren Nalgin, Worcester. I just wanted to, I guess, piggyback off of what some of our other speakers have mentioned about the masks. I did email Dr. Zerby and the Board. And I just, first of all, I wanted to acknowledge, I appreciate the responses I did receive. You know, I know the Board is a volunteer position and honestly, you know, it is nice to be acknowledged, whether or not it's the answer we want to hear or not. I think it's important that if a parent takes the time to send an email, receiving some type of acknowledgement is really appreciated. And I think that, you know, that should be mentioned. But I guess my bigger concern, when we look at the answers I received regarding the masks, you know, it mentions that we're following the county guidance and perhaps some districts are interpreting it differently than others. At this point, there are plenty of districts, they were listed. Also missing were, you know, and while it's not relevant to public school system, the archdiocese, private schools, et cetera, they have also lifted it for outside. And, you know, I think it's important to note that organizations are doing this all over the place. I coach a T-ball team, and we just had a game where our four-to-six-year-olds, they can choose to wear a mask if they want, and if they don't, they stay six feet apart, and it's been working all season. As one of our callers mentioned tonight, it's going to be 90 degrees tomorrow. I just don't see how any parent wants their child in a mask outside at this point, when the county is allowing it to happen, that they don't need to. So considering we're considering doing this for the summer, when there's going to be a significant less amount of children in the classroom, which would allow for more distancing, you know, I feel like we should really consider figuring out a way to make this work, that the children who are able to remove their masks can do so safely and work out the kinks, so that, I mean, no one's mentioned what's happening in the fall, but if the fall is here and this is still happening, the county guidance says that we can take them off at recess. And, you know, I was told the pandemic team decided this. What are the metrics for us to remove it and be like the other school districts? And I really just am asking you to consider that, share that information with us, so we know what we're looking at, because when our neighboring school districts have their children on the playground unmasked, it seems incredibly unfair. Thank you.
Thank you. Next I have Marissa Rocco.
Hi, Marissa Rocco, Lower Providence. I share the same concerns. I feel like, as the caller ahead of me and a few others, I feel like as a district, we've talked so much about being inclusive, yet we're being anything but inclusive. We're including our athletes and their health at a critical time in the heat, but we're not considering our youngest kids in the school. I know Woodland had Field Day last week, two days in the heat, and kids wearing masks. I live across the street from Arrowhead. When I come home at lunch, I see them outside masked up, 90-degree days. It's not, I think we're prioritizing the wrong things, and it makes me think back to when we approved sports for our students in person, but yet our kids were home learning. I feel like our priorities might be a little mixed up. We shouldn't just be focused on the athletes, not needing them during their activity, but including everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Next I have Julie Stern-Delfiner.
Good evening, everyone. Julie Stern-Delfiner from Lower Providence Township. Thank you for letting me speak this evening. First, I just want to thank the Board for all of their hard work over the past year. It's been a really tough year for everyone, and your hard work has been noticed by many. I've been listening this evening about the question about masking outside, and this has obviously been a challenging time for everyone. I think, you know, having the Board follow the Department of Health guidelines, which have been changing, and trying to accommodate those changes along the way has been, you know, a really thoughtful way of going through this process. It has been difficult as it's been getting warmer outside, but currently the Department of Health guidelines are for strenuous exercise. And, you know, of course, one could debate the definition of strenuous exercise in younger children versus older kids who are playing sports. But, you know, clearly, this is something that has been changing over time. And I would caution the public to not necessarily think that whatever decisions are made today are not open for discussion and change over the summer and into next fall. To be able to say that whatever decisions being made today is gonna be what's gonna be in place next fall, I think is disingenuous. I know that our Board and our school health personnel and our administration always have the utmost, you know, concern for the health and safety of our children, and I appreciate that. I also would like to say that I really appreciate Methacton continuing to require masks indoors, because the mask mandate continues for people indoors if you're unvaccinated. And that is the obviously vast majority of our students. And I think that is a very critical thing that we keep in place at the moment. As people become vaccinated, that may change with time, but that's sort of a separate issue. I do also want to say that while masking can be uncomfortable, it is also not as dangerous as many have tried to say that it is at this time. And I think it's a little disingenuous to say that, you know, there is no way to be outside on a hot day in a mask and have it not be, you know, detrimental to your health. That is just not true. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Stern-Delfiner. Next I have John Carr. Whenever you're ready.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Great, John Carr, Worcester Township. Yeah, I was about to say I agree with everybody who just spoke, the last three or four people, but this is obviously in regards to the masking. We have four children and two of them would have been at Worcester this year. We decided to pull them out so they didn't have to be subject to wearing masks. And as I have watched every board meeting and and my wife and I are trying to figure out the best route for our family and our kids, this still hasn't went away, obviously, and we're just trying to navigate through this, but it seems like it is to have young children exerting their energy and wearing masks, and then to talk to a school board member a week ago or so, that we're still looking at it into October, I would ask that we look to fall in line with some of the other schools. I don't want to send my kids somewhere else. I want to send them to our public school. I was a former educator. I believe in public school education. I'm all for it. But the mask issue is a big thing, and with the positivity rate being so low right now, I think that it could be a safe return with unmasking through the summer, especially with the heat with young kids, but also too for next school year. Hopefully that some of those decisions get made sooner than later, so that parents can make a decision, you know, what direction they're gonna go with their kids. So I'm in favor of unmasking the young kids. So I'm in favor of unmasking the young kids for the summer school. I hope that you guys take that into consideration. Thanks.
Thank you. And with that, we'll move on from public comment on board action items. So may I have a motion to approve the board suspension of Board Policy 006.2 with regard to limitation of school directors participating electronically? Well, thank you, Ms. Hall. Is there a second? Thank you, Mr. Winters. Any comments from the board? Seeing none. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries nine zero. May I have a motion to approve the work session meeting minutes from April 20th and the regular board meeting minutes from April 27th?
McGinnis.
Thank you, Mr. McGinnis. Is there a second?
Navaret.
Thank you, Mr. Navaret. Comments from the board? Ms. Hall?
Can I just ask our council, there were questions about the board meeting minutes on one of these. Is what we have sufficient for the recording of the minutes?
It is. There's the the meeting minutes are not a transcript of the meeting, so it's not necessary to capture every word that every single person says during a meeting. As and and really, it's at the discretion of the board if you're satisfied that the minutes capture those items that were discussed and accurately describe certainly any action that was taken at the meeting. And it's certainly my opinion that they meet that that standard.
Thank you.
Any other comments from the board? Okay, all those in favor? Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries nine zero. Now to fiscal items. Mr. Bricker.
Thank you, Madam President. Tonight, for your approval, we have the list of bills, treasurer's report, budgetary transfers, the approval of the insurance carrier, and the extension of the Keystone Agreement.
All right, does anyone?
Just and and just as an advisement, there was an error on the item 10E on the date, I believe, earlier today, we we recognized that it said 2022 rather than 2023. So I just want to make sure that from the work session, everyone knows that that was changed today.
So 2023 is the correct date as it stands on the agenda?
That's correct.
Thank you, Dr. Zerby. Does anyone want to take any of the fiscal items separately? All right, then I'll have a motion to approve all fiscal items as listed. Mr. McGinnis and Mr. Winters with the second. Any comments from the board? Mr. Winters?
Yeah. Tim, can you speak towards the natural gas service, Exelon and Pico bills, please?
I'll have to look at them, but I don't think there's any double payment on those. I'll research them by pulling the invoices tomorrow.
And at that same time, the Shenondale cumulative expense, most of the elements related to the legal expense, assessments and assessment appraisals. I don't know the exact number, but I can assure probably that 95% of that is associated with the Shenondale settlement or not settlement.
That is a very fair estimate.
Yeah, it obviously there would be appraisal cost prior to 1718. So it may not be including all the costs, but it gives you a pretty good estimation. And the the number I'm looking at, it is $518,000 is what's listed under appraisals and assessments.
I agree with your numbers.
All right, thank you, Mr. Winters and Mr. Bricker. Any other comments? Seeing none. All those in favor of these fiscal items?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries nine zero. Moving on to personnel items. Dr. Sergini.
Thank you, Madam President, for your consideration this month. We have the following personnel items: two resignations professional, three resignations classified. In addition to to what I presented last week, we have the addition of the retirement of Ms. Joy Withrow, Instructional Assistant at Arcola. We thank Joy for her 18 years of dedicated service to the students of Methacton, and we wish her well in her retirement. We have one employment administrator, Mr. William Branick, for the position of Director of Technology, one employment classified, one change of status administrative, and that is the appointment of Dr. Jamie Gravenese to the position of Principal of Methacton High School, one change of status classified, two uncompensated leaves professional, including one addition from last week, one uncompensated leave classified, and a series of contracts with two additions from last week. One is the appointment of Ms. Tracy Murray for BBA Crosswalk Developer as we move forward with planning for grade seven to 12 curricular alignment with our virtual offerings. And this week, I'm pleased to recommend to you Mr. Lou Orth as the recommended candidate for the position of Methacton High School Varsity Football Coach. As with our other interview processes, the interview process for Varsity Football Coach included multiple rounds and representatives from a multitude of Methacton stakeholder groups, including student athletes and parents. Mr. Orth, our recommended candidate, has been coaching football at a high level since 1993, when he started his career as an assistant football coach at Widener University. He then became an assistant coach at nearby or Sinus College, and then later at Cheney University, Western Connecticut University, Delaware Valley College, Fairleigh Dickinson University, and Texas Lutheran University. In 2016, Coach Orth took over as the head football coach at Valley Forge Military College, where he coached until the college disbanded their athletic programs in 2019. Coach Orth served as an assistant football coach for the Methacton Warriors in during the 2020 season, and we look forward to his many years of leadership with the Warrior Football Program. We also have one classified substitute and the attached list of volunteers, including several recent Methacton graduates. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Sergini. Does anyone want to take any of these personnel items separately? All right, so may I have a motion to approve all the personnel items as listed?
Reese.
Thank you, Ms. Reese. Is there a second?
Winters.
Thank you, Mr. Winters. Any comments from the board on any of these personnel items? Mr. McGinnis?
Dr. Tortini, in regards to Coach Orth, I I saw that he's also the head coach of a of a postgraduate program. I'm assuming that won't interfere or that's a current job that he's going to leave. There's no conflict there?
No conflict. We have done our due diligence in ensuring that.
Okay, and the other question I would have is, and again, I'm a football guy, so I am biased. We seem to fill the head football coach position very quickly. Do we have any other head coaching positions open in fall right now?
Not to my knowledge, no. We are, we're filling the girls varsity swimming position for winter and then also the varsity football position.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Winters?
Yeah, three, three quick things. One, I see congratulations to Ms. Davis for moving on. But I assume there's going to be discussion on right to no support at some point. Be interested to see where that lands. I also, Ms. Goodrich also pointed out that the 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 class sponsors did a fantastic job, but I think it's really important when we have these supplemental contracts. Not sure it's actually a supplemental contract or it's part of the point system, but the class sponsors for the senior class, Ms. Aldafar and Ms. Fabrizio, I don't know if I mispronounced your names, I apologize, did a fantastic job and well above and beyond to make the senior event this past Friday. I think we need to point out that money well spent in having those senior advisors. I do want to speak to Dr. Gravenese for the appointment. I think it's a fantastic choice. She's already shown how respectful she is to the students and the staff and as a caring and nurturing environment. She has fantastic communication skills, as we've seen already in the last three or four months. And I think she's really, I think it's really important to point out that as a as lifelong learners, she was put in, I believe, this special education position and was sort of thrown into the deep end in an area that she didn't necessarily feel that she necessarily had the experience and succeeded in that area and has developed the confidence to take on the high school principal position. So I I think it's really shows, it's a great example for all our students of taking chances and really showing the progression that they can. I think it's an outstanding choice for Methacton.
I just want to piggyback on the end of that. Dr. Gravenese was the first administrator at the high school that I had the pleasure of meeting several years ago when my oldest child started at the high school and any of my my fears and and concerns that I had about my baby starting high school were immediately gone once I met her. She is an outstanding administrator and educator, and I'm I'm very pleased to have her as part of our district and have her taking this role at the high school. Anyone who is willing to step up and lead a high school in the middle of a global pandemic must truly love what they do. And and she has shown that she is more than fit for the task, so I I'm glad that we have Dr. Gravenese. Do we have any other? Just Mr. McGinnis?
I'm sorry, I I neglected. I want to follow up with Mr. Winters said regarding the senior event on Friday. All seven of the kids that I dropped off and who had to come back to our house to get their cars were raving about it. It was a first-class event and Dr. Sergini, Dr. Zerby, Dr. Spewack, please pass that along to everyone who was on the organizing committee. As a parent of a senior and to see the seven seniors actually act and look like seniors in high school, it was refreshing and all of your work was worth it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. McGinnis. We certainly will pass that along.
Mr. Navaret?
I just want to add, I had the pleasure of sitting in on the interviews for the high school principals. And I will say that Dr. Gravenese shown brighter than I've seen her shine yet. So I look forward to seeing what she does at our high school. She is certainly the right person at the right time for the needs of our students coming back to school in the fall out of this pandemic. Then she is a, she is a shining star from Methacton, and it's great to see us promoting from within. Oh, go ahead.
Hey, let's get her approved. Let's do it.
Give me a chance. I I do also want to recognize Gail Brown. Gail has taught with my wife at second grade at Eagleville for a lot of years. I've known Gail for a tremendous amount of time. She is a tremendous teacher, tremendous asset. The fact that she's stuck it out for this year, along with, quite frankly, everyone else on this list that probably could have retired at the end of last year and stuck it out through what was probably the most difficult year of their entire career says something about the character of these individuals. So certainly, there's a lot of big shoes to fill throughout this district, but second grade at Eagleville will be a little bit emptier.
And I know Dr. Zerby wants us to hurry up and approve Dr. Gravenese, but I I already spoke last week, so I'm not going to repeat myself. But in between last week and this week, I just want to tell Dr. Gravenese to keep up that whole child approach, because somebody told me a story this week when they heard you were up for principal. And I'm not going to name names, but it was a ballerina. And Dr. Gravenese, as an assistant principal, was one of the first people to say to her, what do you want to do, young lady? And that young lady said, I want to be a ballerina. And Dr. Gravenese said, well, we need to change up this schedule and what you're doing here at our high school, because, you know, you want to be a ballerina. And anyway, that young woman is a working ballerina and Dr. Gravenese was part of that. So I know she'll continue that whole child approach.
All right, let's get her approved. Come on.
Yeah, I don't know if I have enough patience to get through this meeting.
We can give her the accolades after. I want to bring her on. I want her approved, bring her on, and get rocking and rolling. Let's do this.
Is there anything else for personnel? All right, so all those in favor of the personnel items as listed, including Dr. Gravenese?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries nine zero.
All right, Dr. Gravenese, you want to join us? Turn on your camera. All right, there she is. Congratulations.
Thanks so much, everyone. It's a love fest here. I'm getting, I'm getting a little choked up at this. Thank you so much for the kind words. I'm I'm so excited about this. This is going to be an amazing experience. It's been a kind of full circle moment from starting with student teaching and then kind of making my way. I I know Methacton inside and out, and I can't wait to continue to make it an amazing, amazing place, and I hope to make you all very proud. One just small thing, I think one group that we forgot to thank in the senior event was the post-prom because those those volunteers worked so hard with Heidi Aldifer and Gina Fabrizio, who literally walk on water at this point with what they were able to pull off. But I just want to thank them because we wouldn't have been able to set up without all the parent volunteers and all the post-prom's help. And we wouldn't have been able to organize it, and we wouldn't have been able to do it without them. And it's that amazing partnership that we are just so thankful to have, and we look forward to continuing to put on some amazing events for all the kids.
She'll do great things for us. Thanks, Jamie.
And I just want to say, the same way that I received tests when parents found out that Mrs. Sergini was leaving the high school, and there were a lot of upset parents, I do want to say that there are many happy parents that are looking forward to having you, Dr. Gravenese, join the high school, well, officially as the high school principal. So we're looking forward to it. And I was part of the the interview panel, and I'm looking forward to all the things that you have mapped out for the high school when we come back in the fall. So thank you, and thank you, Jason, also.
Thank you so much.
All right, again, can we just end here? Sorry. Okay, moving on.
Thank you, Dr. Gravenese. Have a wonderful evening.
Good night, everyone. Thank you so much.
So we don't have anything for curriculum and programs this evening. Under policy, we have 10 policies up for a first read and six for a second read, which means those six are up for approval this evening. Can I have a motion to approve the six policies up for second read as posted?
Purdue.
Thanks, Ms. Purdue. Is there a second?
Oh.
Thank you, Ms. Hall. Any comments from the board on these policies?
Um, just that we are voting on the first and not the second, and I just wanted to let the the woman know who asked about the performance assessment of the superintendent that we we will answer her questions. You know, we're going to vote on it next month, so I don't have the policy open in front of me, but I'm sure that somebody will answer those questions I, as far as what exactly that policy reads.
I think you're, I think you got to crisscross Andrea a little bit.
Oh, I apologize.
Now, we are, we're voting on the second read policy.
You're right. Sorry, you know, my my policy, I apologize.
It's been a little while for policy.
Yeah, well, and I was on the policy committee before property, of course, second reading means we vote on it. I apologize. Thank you for correcting me. So I don't know if Ms. Hall or Mr. or Dr. Zerby wants to answer that or if we could pull it up. I know personally that we don't ask for certain numbers for a PSSA for the superintendent. What I mean by that is we don't get asked for a certain number because that would not be correct. Because if we do that, then that's all our school district would do, would be to you know, focus on a PSSA, which is not what us education should be. But I'm not sure if her, that answers her question. There is no number that has to be reached for Dr. Zerby or excuse me, for Dr. Regina to perform.
The way that I took the question was that she was looking for more specific information in the 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 measures that are put out in that policy. There are eight different objective performance standards that are listed. And I think in general, in policy, we try to keep things as broad so that we can work within that framework. Kim, did you want to add anything on this?
Oh, no, you you are the policy graver, Paul. You got this.
Yeah, so in addition to that, the the board then sets goals, and within those goals, there there are objectives to to reach. So according to those eight areas and and the goals are set by the board for the given year, then the the performance evaluation is then posted in summary fashion on the district website. then the performance evaluation is then posted in summary fashion on the district website as per law.
And to be more semantical a little bit, it does say the objective performance standards may be based upon all or all, upon any or all of the following. So I know in my six years now, five, whatever, five and a half, we have not, I have not been a part of a group that's put goals associated with a specific performance in Keystone exams or PSSAs or P VAS, for that matter. Often the goals are around operational and educational changes.
I just pulled that up, and it looks like that citation is referencing school code. So all of those items are directly pulled from law.
And thank you. And I apologize. I knew that this was there because we didn't have an assistant superintendent before. So I knew they were relative to what we do for the superintendent. So I apologize for my confusion.
No worries. It's been a long year. Any other comments on board policies? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries nine zero. Other? Dr. Zerby?
Yes, under other, we have no gifts and donations. We have trips approved the trip from a fact in high school true leading team to participate in varsity spirit cheer camp in Honesdale, PA, August 19th through the 22nd, no cost to the district. Election of board treasurer and board secretary as listed. The employment contracts as presented at the work session by Mr. Bicker and Mr. Regina are listed there for both, or for all three groups, the collective bargaining agreement between the school district and the Teamsters, the benefit and compensation plan for confidential and exempt employees, and the benefit and compensation plan for the Act 93 employees. And then the last item is the health and safety plan update. While it's rather extensive, it does address what we're doing for the summer and moving forward. I do want to make some clarification, and I said this back in, I believe, either April or March. We did approve a modification to the health and safety plan for the next school year as part of our process for allowing parents the most up-to-date information at the time when they make their selections here in the first week of June for coming in person or choosing an alternative option for online learning. It was said at that time, and I believe this will occur, that in July, we'll be making our final modifications, recommendations to the board for their consideration. Likely that will include matters associated with masks. It'll include matters associated with distancing. The two most prevalent matters that challenge our operation or challenge the interest of students and staff from working and/or attending in-person instruction. With that said, we will review in early July with the pandemic team, get advice from the Montgomery County Department of Health, and have a recommendation in July for the board's consideration. If there are any other questions on that particular matter for the board members that I might be able to answer, I'd be glad to do so. And that takes care of item number 14.
Let's wait until we have a motion before we start taking questions. So what I'm going to do then is I'm going to ask for a motion for items 14, B, C, D, and E. We'll take the health and safety plan separate. So Ms. Reese with the motion. Thank you. In a second.
Navarret?
Thank you, Mr. Navarret. Any comments from the board on those items? Okay. Thank you to all those who participated in the collective bargaining agreements and negotiating the benefit and compensation plans. It's much appreciated. So with that, I will take a vote then. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries nine zero. So now I will take a motion to approve the health and safety plan update as posted.
Reese?
Thank you, Ms. Reese. In a second.
Winters?
Thank you, Mr. Winters. Comments from the board? Ms. Reese?
First, Dr. Zerby, thank you for clarifying about the summer, that there's one more opportunity to look at this. And second, I wanted to ask you about recess because I believe, being a third-grade teacher, the issue with recess is that there's like 100 kids out there at a time. So I believe that the principals have put a plan in place where children can take mask breaks during recess. I just wanted to clarify that that's correct. Is it?
That is correct. In fact, as part of this, as part of our process here going into the summer, into the warmer months, we've increased the locations and the frequency for mask breaks at recess. Again, the reason for maintaining masks is to maintain the routine and the consistency within this process for approximately, I believe it might be eight more school days. And that's really kind of the impetus of the matter as described by the elementary principals. They felt it would best for the operation of the schools and for the teachers and for the consistency.
And thank you. And I just, I do understand parents' concerns, and I understand, you know, parents' concerns about the heat. You know, I just, it's not about me at all because I do not have any children that are at recess. So in full transparency, but you know, my family had not had to quarantine this whole time. We were very lucky, and luck is all it was. But we recently did have a quarantine. And I would just hate for any of those little guys to have to quarantine and miss any end-of-the-year fun activities. So, you know, I do understand parents' concerns, and I hope that they will reiterate to their children that for the next eight or so recesses, to please take that mask break and that water break and that they feel that they need. And we will definitely look towards the summer for the guidance. And thank you for all of your, all the parents' patience. And that's it.
Dr. Zerby, I had a question. Our summer programs, when will they be starting?
Dr. Walsh, I'm going to, I think they start in July, but I don't know.
The first week of July through some run actually to the first week of August, as most will be ending the end of July.
Okay. And is there an outdoor play component to summer programs? Is there recess and things like that?
Yes, there's a time for them to take a break. The groups obviously will be a lot smaller. There'll be a lot more space for them to take their breaks during some of our programs that we're offering this summer.
Okay.
So let's just make clarification. We have breaks for them, but it's not technically recess. Is that correct?
That is correct. Yeah, just like a stretch break, get fresh air. Some of our programs require them to actually go outside and be introduced to the equipment at kindergarten. We're offering later in the summer.
Okay, but there will be.
It's not recess.
Okay. Okay, that helps. So what we're looking at then is just getting through these last few days of the school year. And I, Ms. Reese, I appreciate you sharing your personal experience there and that, you know, it's a fair point that a quarantine at this point in the school year would just be, it would be hard, I feel for people. Is there anyone else that has any comments or questions on this item? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion carries nine zero. Moving on, we have our dates for board members' calendars, which is all of our remaining virtual meetings. Next month, we'll be looking at dates for in-person meetings there. Do we have anything for old business?
Just wanted to make note, Dr. Zerby, thank you for letting us know why full-day kindergarten was not on the agenda tonight. I appreciate that mistakes happen. I did notice, you know, the new board agenda is a little wonky. Excuse the term wonky. I don't know the official term for that. But I hope that it become, I don't know if it's glitches in the new update or what, but I did see that it's, you know, it has a little, I know people don't like change, but I did notice there's some issues there. So if we have to get the board agenda reps out or reconsider board agenda, maybe that's something we need to do.
Mr. Winters?
Yeah, the one item that we haven't talked about for a long time, and I realize that there's been a lot going on, and the full-day kindergarten probably is a domino, the decision on full-day kindergarten is a domino. But I do want to reopen the discussion related to the use of Audubon and what we're going to do with it. So hopefully, and then we can put that in the summer agenda, please.
Yes, we should have some updates on that in the months ahead. Anything else for old business? New business? Mr. Navarret?
Yeah, just to address Paul's comment. Yeah, Paul, we did have a meeting with Lower Providence again about revisiting the idea of a community center there, kind of post-COVID, and what it would take for them to raise money. So hopefully, we'll be working through those issues and have more to say, as Kim said, in the next couple of months here.
Anything else for new business? Mr. McGinnis?
Dr. Zerby, and you can put Dr. Gravenese on this on our first full day of the senior high. Having seven seniors at your house on Friday, the chatter around the, and I'm probably not calling it the right thing, the senior clapout where they visit their elementary schools was shockingly important to them. So if there's any way we can find a lineup that's fit, maybe that's something we can try and do.
I know that there was discussions on that matter. I don't know where it currently stands, but we'll get that looked into and report back to the board.
Thank you.
I'm sorry. Real quick, just on a personal note, which I try not to do. I am not going to attend graduation this year, which was a hard decision for me. It's such an honor as a school board member. So just a quick shout out to all the seniors because I chose to stay with my students because June and substitutes is difficult. So I just wanted to say a quick shout out to all the seniors and best luck to all of you. And thank you for your resilience and your patience. And I think this class will be phenomenal in the future. And I feel good with you guys. If you can get through this year and last year, that, so I really wish I could hand some of your diplomas. But anyway, good luck. Thank you to the seniors.
Thank you, Ms. Reese. Anything else for new business? I did want to mention one thing that we had talked about just between Dr. Zerby and Ms. Drummond and I. We had looked into at Ms. Drummond's suggestion, the possibility of continuing to offer our free meals to students at lunch in the next school year. And it, at first glance, seemed like it wasn't going to be fiscally possible. But due to Ms. Drummond's persistence that we take a closer look at the numbers, it did turn out to be something that we can, not only is it a much more manageable amount, but it's an amount that's covered by, I believe there's a federal program that is covering it. I don't remember the exact details. But I just wanted to acknowledge that, you know, I know that next year is going to have its own challenges as kids are coming back into the building, some of them for the first time in a year and a half. And many families are still feeling the effects of the pandemic. So I just wanted to say that, you know, we will be continuing to offer free lunches, and I appreciate Ms. Drummond's persistence in making that happen.
Just a quick question. And Ms. Drummond, I don't know if you know, do you know if we will continue the backpack program through the summer also?
The backpack program will not continue through the summer. We have two more distributions. One is tomorrow morning, and one is two weeks later where we're also going to hand out pantry staples. But what we're going to do in preparation to have the distribution points be at the local school level instead of one distribution point at the high school, we are going to work on replenishing our stock over the summer. So if anyone is following the Methacton Backpack Program on Facebook, you're welcome to do that. It's at Methacton Backpack. And we are going to put out our needs, list out our needs like at the end of July, August, so we can get ready for the next school year. So the plan is to, the distribution points will be at each school. So that's how we're going to do it. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Mr. Navarret?
Yeah, I just, I don't want to turn this into a Dr. Graveney-style love fest here. But honestly, Liz, thanks for all you've done over the last year. I don't know that there is anybody that has done as much in our school district to keep our families fed as you have. So thank you for those efforts. I know the time that you have spent committed to this during the day, on the weekends. It is appreciated by everyone, and you deserve to be recognized for it. So thank you.
Well, now, thank you. Thank you. You're very welcome. It was, it's been a pleasure and working with Dr. Gravenese on the backpack program and with Gabby Winters has been a real pleasure, and we're a great team.
All right. So we are going to end our part of the meeting on a high note. Look at that. With that, then I will move on to courtesy of the floor. So this is an opportunity for members of the public wanting to make comments. We ask that you pre-register by five o'clock today. Again, please keep your comments limited to four minutes. And if you could introduce yourself with your name and municipality. Okay, first I have Mark Bradbury. You are in whenever you're ready. Looks like you're still muted.
I'm sorry. I apologize. Can you hear me now?
Yes, I can.
All right. Good evening, Mark Bradbury, Lower Providence Township. I've been a silent observer from the Methacton community, and I stepped out of my comfort zone tonight to voice my disappointment. The past several months have been extremely disappointing me in regards to several school board topics. I want to emphasize that I'm not mad. However, I am disappointed. There's a vast difference between being mad and being disappointed. When a community member says that any elect, to any elected official, that I am not mad at you, I'm disappointed in you, that phrase should be alarming. That phrase should mean something. It should strike a nerve. The reason why I'm so disappointed revolves around Mr. McGinnis's comments during the working session meeting on 4/20/21. Mr. McGinnis's inappropriate and disparaging comments serve no purpose in a public forum. In fact, Mr. McGinnis's comments serve no purpose whatsoever. I invite the public to view what exactly I am talking about on YouTube, the Methacton Working Session Meeting held on 4/20/21. Please watch around the two-hour, 21-minute, 50-second work. It is at this point where Mr. McGinnis curses at a member of the community. I registered to speak at the April regular board meeting. However, I later found out that my registration was never recorded or accepted, and that I was not allowed to speak at that meeting. This is why I'm speaking about this issue a month late. Ms. Aubrey Losnais, what is your stance as school board president in regards to Mr. McGinnis's cursing at a member of the Methacton community? I would welcome and appreciate any response. After McGinnis's comments last month at the working session, I know for a fact that many members of our community also feel disappointed and disrespected. Is this how Methacton is to be led? Where is the response or admonishment from the school board? Is this how the community, is this how community leaders behave? Mr. McGinnis cursing at a citizen taxpayer, mother of the Methacton community is beyond unacceptable. I've sent two emails in regards to Mr. McGinnis's comments to both Dr. Zerby and Mr. McGinnis that went unanswered. I would like to remind the community who are listening that Mr. McGinnis said in the 4/20/21 working session meeting, and I quote, Mr. McGinnis, "To say that we are hiding is nonsense." I still have not received a response from Mr. McGinnis from the two emails I sent on Wednesday, 4/22/21, and Saturday, 4/24/21. Not answering two emails is the definition of hiding, Mr. McGinnis. All I wanted was a response. All I wanted was a response. I never asked for an apology. You have failed to respond to me on two occasions. In my humble opinion, you appear to be hiding and avoiding responding to me. Mr. McGinnis, have you seen or read my email? I sent it twice. Please respond to me. I would greatly appreciate your response. Again, I am not mad. I am disappointed. School board members are elected by members of this district to be leaders in our community and advocates for our children. I appreciate your time. Thank you. Good night.
Okay. Um, next I have a person whose name is not appearing and it says call in user one. I'm not sure how to go about identifying that person, so I'm going to let them in, but um, I just need you to please identify yourself so that I know if you're on our list of, of pre-registered speakers. Go ahead. Okay, I'm going to put you back into the main room. Um, and if you want to try again, um, please raise your hand. So next I have Joe Rittenhouse.
Hi there. Am I heard?
Yes, you are.
Perfect. All right. Thank you. So I'm going to speak very specifically about one topic. Uh, it's proposed changes to right to no requests that the district is looking to pursue. Uh, last week in the working session, there was a presentation that showed an exponential rise in the costs related to the legal fees associated with right to no requests. I thought it was very jarring. However, I believe that the more jarring thing was the response the district chose to do, which was publishing the names and the types of requests requested from people coming to the district. Uh, there are two ways to incentivize behavior. There is reward and there is punishment. And I do not believe uh, the concept of publishing requesters' names certainly does not fall within the category of incentives. So obviously this is a punishment. To be as blunt as possible, I truly believe this is a terrible policy that will have the opposite effect of what is intended. Publishing the names of people requesting right to no requests will not target the problem at the slightest. Honestly and truthfully, I believe it is unethical and a massive form of bullying directed at students, parents, alumni, uh, grandmoms, grandmom, uh, grandpops, momoms, pop ups, anyone who wishes to have a change in their district and, and get information. This will not affect companies or individuals who abuse the right to know requests. Uh, this will target normal methacan families who are being fear, are fearful of being doxxed and effectively end how right to know is used in the district. There was a poll uh, done in 2020 that said 65% of Americans are genuinely scared of voicing their opinions publicly for fear of how their neighbors will react. The group that was most comfortable speaking publicly was actually elected officials. So I don't actually believe this comes from a place of malice from the district, but I believe it comes from a, a blind spot. So I think it needs to be addressed. Anecdotally, uh, last month, I, I believe people are aware, I spoke in opposition to an openly partisan textbook passed by the district. I spoke because I believed it was important. Since then, apparently one listener of the call proceeded to contact my employer and attempt to get me fired, calling me a racist, calling me a Nazi. Another person filed a false DCM, a uh, takedown claim against some of my online content affecting my income. Uh, this doesn't scare me because this is fairly new. This, this is fairly common at this point. But I want to emphasize that this proposed change to publish names will not affect the root of the problem. In fact, I believe it will make a financial incentive for those who uh, do file lots of right to know requests to continue to do so. Acting as a proxy for those that are too terrified to speak their mind because they don't want their names published. I know that there's an organization based in Philadelphia called FIRE that is the foundation for individual rights and education that has become increasingly interested in K through 12 public education and its transparency. And they would absolutely take this up. I cannot speak to legality. I can only speak to morality and, and that is what I believe is the heart of this change. I do not believe that this is the best uh, interest of our district. That single one layer of anonymity is the best defense against people feeling that they can speak their mind. There are many, many ways to fix this and I, I believe it starts at home. I have a, a ton of list of solutions I'd be willing to share. I don't know if I have the time, but I really, really hope that the board will consider not pursuing this line of inquiry into publishing the names and doxxing individuals who seek the use right to know to get information from the district. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I'm going to try again for this call in user one. So you are in, if you could just identify yourself, please. All right. Unfortunately, it does not appear that that's working. So if you um, would like, you can please email us with your concerns. Um, and, and I'll, I'll respond to acknowledged receipt. Uh, next I have Marissa Rocco.
Thank you, Marissa Rocco, Lower Providence. I have a couple of comments I want to make tonight and I will follow up with an email because I want to make sure I have this information correct. But when I was looking at the enrollment and report from August 2021, well, I guess the beginning of the school year, I saw 4707 and at present or May, I see 4599. Do we know what happened to those 108 students? And, and maybe I could have those numbers wrong, but if that was 108 that we lost through this school year, I would love to know some reasons to why. I for one withdrew my son and was never asked for a reason of why. Simply was just sign the form and that was it. When I've now sent my daughter's release of transcript form, there's never any question to why. So in the eighth grade class, for example, I'm seeing rough numbers of 377, eighth grade. I would love to have the numbers published of how many actually then attend methactin high school. Now I know you'll gain some from the Catholic schools that will come into the high school. But I first, I know firsthand, there's approximately 20 plus students leaving methactin to go to private schools next year. So I, I'm just wondering if, if we're at all concerned with that. I know percentage wise, it's not a high percentage, but it's, it's a good chunk. And maybe that's the norm. Maybe you lose that every year, eighth grade to ninth grade, but I just wanted to raise that concern. Um, Brian Earnshaw at, I think it was during the last work session meeting said regarding the right to know requests that perhaps he was one that said he did need to file one, but perhaps he wouldn't have if he received follow-up and, and received emails back regarding his concerns. And I think that, that's one place this board is lacking. I for one have received emails back from every board member except Paul Winters and Drew McGinnis. And I have actually asked Drew McGinnis pointed for information and have never received a reply. That leads me to my next comment. Not only has Drew McGinnis used colorful language and cursed at members of the community, his condescending tone with his correspondence with Dr. Zerby at last, last, um, the last work session meeting around right to know was extremely offensive. It, it was jovial in a way and, and he was trying to prove the point that what did we uncover with these right to know requests? The condescending tone from him has to stop. I know he's not up for reelection, but this is now the third time because at the beginning of the school year over the summer, he made comments about not wanting to hire young teachers into the district when we needed teachers. And I emailed him about that and never received a reply. I just want to be clear with, with the community that I hope you're listening to these board meetings so we can make some changes moving forward. My last comment is around foreign language. I have an eighth grader who has foreign language every other year, I mean, every other day. She will repeat language next year at her private school, but if you're going into methactin and you're going to foreign language too, you're required to complete summer work to be ready for, for foreign language next year. Uh, I, I'm still not understanding why we're putting this on the kids to be self-teaching over the summer to have them prepared for foreign language too. I hope they have the choice to repeat foreign language because they don't feel every other day and most of it being virtual for them is enough for them to start second year language. There's children being placed in honors foreign language that are not ready. They might have a 98 or 99 as my daughter does. She said there is no way she'd be ready for a second year of language. So I really hope that everyone's looking at that every other day, foreign language. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we're going to try one last time for this call in user. Okay, you're in.
Am I unmuted? Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you. Can you just enter, um, say your name?
Sure, of course. Cliff and Barbara, Lower Providence.
Thank you.
Yeah, um, you know, I was taking a look at the uh, the safety department page today on the methactin website. Specifically with regards to uh, drills, um, active shooter, intruder. It made me very happy to see that the community was working with local law enforcement in conjunction and in concert with those drills. I think that's very important. My question is, and this is kind of, I guess more in the spirit of transparency and efficiency. Uh, I, I think would be helpful for Dr. Zerby and the DEI committee to maybe voice their anti-police opinions and partisan rhetoric uh, face to face with our local law enforcement. I think it's very easy to put that up on the website with such partisan uh, links sent to families to talk to their children to places like the ADL, to places like the Southern Poverty Law Center, none of which backed the blue, all of which said that the police are systemically racist and taking shots at young black men because of their racism, which everyone knows is demonstrably untrue. Now, if there is an active shooter in the school, God forbid, I think everyone in the community would certainly not want that police officer to hesitate but fear for the color of the active shooter's skin and the position, our superintendent and these radical leftist DEI hustlers and the game they're playing on you. Now, anyone who's curious about right to know requests and being doxxed and not being anonymous, I would suggest they look into Freedom of Information Act requests that organizations like Parents Defending Education, No Left Turn, uh, and others on a more national scale, as well as the national media, would be more than happy to file on your behalf without your name. With regards to kids in masks and the very hot heat, I would ask all the grownups in the room who support it to go outside and play a game of tag or kickball wearing a cloth mask next time it's 95 degrees. Now, in the spirit of not using up all of my white privilege in my time, I'd like to give the rest of my time back to Mrs. Chung, uh, who seemed like she had some very interesting things to say about Dr. Bruce Campbell that a lot of parents in the community are concerned about. Thank you.
Next I have John Carr.
Hi, John Carr, Worcester. I just want to bring uh, something to light that came across my plate. It was a video from the intermediate school and I'm going to quote this. It's uncomfortable leaving, saying it, but I guess it was a morning announcement and it was a queer fact of the week. And I'm not sure, um, I would, I would be very interested to, to know if, if this is known, if this was approved by Dr. Zerby, the school board. Um, do you know this is happening? You know, as a, as a Christian family, again, my children, I want to get them back into Methactin School District. This is very concerning for me uh, at this time. Um, I understand and I, and I believe that there is a, a group for, for students and, and a club and different things like that. And I'm all supportive of that. I even reached out to my, my former principal up north to see if I'm missing something. I've been out of, out of the, the teaching realm for several years now, but um, it seemed to catch him off guard too. And uh, like Mark Bradbury said, I've been a very silent observer, uh, haven't, haven't called in ever. Didn't really want to, but this is, this is something that we feel very strong about. And I'd like to get some answers on um, kind of where and what direction uh, methactin is going as a district, as the board decides. Dr. Zerby and, and even the teachers, if you guys, I just want to make you aware that something like this is going on. Not that I'm, I don't want to, I don't want to be labeled that I'm against something like that, but I think in the realm of a morning announcement to all students, I think it's some, some harsher language. And I'm not sure if, if it's known that that's going on. So that, that's about it. Thank you for your time.
Next I have Chun-Ling Ma.
Whenever you're ready. Hello?
Yep.
Can you hear me? Hi Chun-Ling Ma, Worcester Township. I just have a couple of things to touch upon. First is the DEI program. I did some research for Dr. Bruce Campbell on the internet. I think everybody else probably can do the same thing. I found him as a social justice radical with a political agenda seeking to indoctrinate our kids with his personal ideology. I just don't know if our board or the administration, when we hired him or approved the, the DEI program, did the same background, background research or not. For example, if you look at his Facebook page, uh, there's one called the Dust and Plus Dignity. It's a podcast. There's also a podcast with the same name. If you look at the, his video on May 28th, 2020 and there is a song, a video, and there are a lot of people protesting for social justice. And then some, and then you can clearly see he has anti-police undertone there. For example, there is a person having the slogan saying, US police began as a slave patrols. What does that mean? Does it mean US police still doing slave patrols? Whoever they want to capture must be like a black slaves or something. You can just tell by watching that video. Another thing is he, he, he was a contributor of a book called How We Fight White Supremacy. I just wonder if our board and the administration think methactin has a problem in our district with white supremacy. I, I, I think what I can tell here hiring him to do our DEI program is to divide us more than to unite us. I think methactin should be united and not like the rest of the country is doing. And our main focus should be focused on education, how to improve our education. Another thing about it, yeah, is the transparency. First I had questions about the community's selection. And I think most people were selected just by, by the likings of the, maybe the, the DEI was her name, Dr. Darby, uh, to her own personal liking, likings. And all the criteria that I checked, it was quite subjective. You can say, if you don't like someone, you can just say you don't qualify for those standards. And it ended up, most of them are, are their friends going to the committees and they're mostly Democrats. And I don't think a school, school board or any school, um, committee or program should be political. And if you want to have a more objective view, you should, should select people from both parties into the committees. And also the meetings are private. Uh, they don't allow public to join. And I don't know if they're going to publish the meeting to the public, like in the YouTube. It's just quite under the, under, under the table, everything. And also I had a question regarding the survey. If, if you, you guys talk about like Mr. McGillis had a colorful language, then you should look at a survey with all the section orientation described. And I even had to look up in my dictionary what that means. And you, you asked us how old, like a eighth grade, seventh grader to fill out, fill out that survey. It's just really disturbing to me. And next I want to touch upon the, about the critical race theory and how do the board and administration feel about it? Do, do you advocate equality or equity? Equality means equal opportunity for everyone. Equity means equal outcome, no matter how hard you work or no matter how talented you are in this area, you get an equal result. Um, last, I probably, I have others to cover, but just I run out of time. I just covered the my request. I, I echo with Mr. Bradbury and the Mr. Earnshaw, uh, their, uh, their concern about Mr. McGillis' profanity in the April 20th meeting. And I think as a school board director, he should apologize. Just be a man, do the right thing.
Thank you. Next I have Julie Stern Delphina.
Hi, everyone. Thank you very much. This is Julie Stern Delphine from Lower Providence. Um, just a couple of things, uh, in general. The first is that I really commend the school district for working with Skipback Pharmacy to have, um, a vaccine clinic on site. For tomorrow afternoon from five to eight o'clock. Um, this is open to the public for anybody age twelve and older, and I really encourage families. To take advantage of this great opportunity. Um, I have volunteered with Skipback Pharmacy several times. In their vaccine clinics that have been at North Penn High School. They're well organized, they're well run, and they're very safe. The vaccine is very safe for everyone over age twelve. If you are looking for good information about, um, the vaccine, and I, I totally understand that there are very legitimate questions. About why we should be vaccinated, who should be vaccinated, the risk of the vaccine and everything else. There are some really excellent, um, resources available at Children's Hospital of Philadelphia. If you go to chop.edu, um, the vaccine page is incredibly well researched. And, uh, and speaks to a lot of questions that people in the public have. So I do encourage, um, as many people to get vaccinated as possible. It is really, um, the best way that we have of combating this, uh, this illness in addition to masking and social distancing. I also, uh, just, I know that we didn't vote on, um, full day kindergarten today, but did want to, um, just give my full support for this. When my son is going to be a sophomore next year, when he was entering kindergarten, we were talking about maybe possibly having full day kindergarten. That was eleven, twelve, thirteen years ago. It's time to have full day kindergarten. We are losing people who have decided not to move into our school district. Because we do not offer full day kindergarten and the program that's being proposed as a play-based program is well thought out. It's educationally sound. Our students are ready for it. Our families are ready for it. Our teachers are ready for it. And I, I really commend the district for, uh, working so hard to make this a reality. So, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Stern Delphine. Uh, next I have Lauren Nalgin.
Lauren Nalgin, Worcester. I just wanted to follow up with my comment earlier regarding the masks. I was just wondering if you can share, you keep referencing the pandemic team and I just wasn't clear who that was. Um, I think during the pandemic, you know, it's been clear that, you know, we've had certain, certain metrics we have to hit, right? Our governor has shared once X percent is vaccinated, these. Et cetera. So with the confusion of some school districts following the guide. If people so choose, uh, during certain times and we are choosing to not follow that guidance. What are the metrics for us to follow that guidance moving forward? Are, are we waiting for Montgomery County to put out a statement regarding a specific, uh, data point? I'm just unclear who is making that decision and how it's being made based on the science. I think, I, I'm, and I'm speaking for the teachers and I can't, you know, certainly do that, but just to guess, I have five children. And I know when they come home from school and they mentioned recess, there's a lot that happens in that recess yard. I mean, I think my kids have participated in more football games at recess than they have at home. And they have come home very sweaty. I have two children with asthma. Um, I did share with the board that one of my children did collapse in a mask. We now have since obtained a mask exemption for him. Um, he has asthma. But, you know, there's a lot of people that don't have that opportunity and I think to just dismiss the fact that it is hot. Um, and there's X amount of days left, it's really not the point. The point was that the guidance was put out there. And, you know, just moving forward, since it's already been voted on, please inform the public, what are the metrics for us to make the change? Like the surrounding school districts have done. I think that that would be fair to share with the public. So that, like another caller said, we can make decisions for our children. This has been a very difficult year and no one is, is arguing that point. But as we plan for the fall.
You cut out.
Yeah, the last we heard was as you plan for the fall. I'm sorry, Ms. Nalgin.
And she will have been at the playground with them. Chen, that you can provide to the public will be really helpful. Thank you.
I'm sorry, Ms. Nalgin, can you repeat the last part of what you said? You cut out when you said after the fall.
Uh, my phone's cutting out. Um, I guess, I don't know where I cut out, so I'm just gonna say, um, I have an incoming kindergartner. I don't know if you heard that part. I have an incoming kindergartner that will be attending the summer program, which I'm excited about. I want her to, to see the building and I'm thrilled that's going to be an option for her. But I think that, you know, we just need to know what that updated guidance is going to look like for the masks. And like I said, just the, the decisions, you know, how they're being made. Because I know, you know, as we're watching the governors and them, they're sharing that information of what, you know, we need to obtain. I mean, Governor Wolf tweets it out every week, what percentage we are of that seventy percent vaccinated. There's a lot of people who are watching those numbers. So what in Methacton has to occur for us to follow the guidance of the other school districts? Thank you.
Thank you for bearing with us and repeating that last part. I appreciate it. Uh, next I have Kristen Sherman.
Hi, Kristen Sherman, Lower Providence. I just want to follow up, um, regarding the masks. Um, just again, uh, who's on the pandemic committee? Again, if we could get more information on that, that would be awesome. Um, I'm also confused too. If positivity, positivity rate in Montgomery County as a whole is three percent. I still don't understand why we need to wear masks outside, especially if there were recommendations or guidelines saying that you don't have to. I took Mayo Clinic and low-risk activities, which are safe to perform outside, which incur a little spread. Include walking, running, rock climbing and fitness classes, all of which elementary students do on a daily basis outside. My children attend Arrowhead, oh, my daughter attends Arrowhead. And she, I asked her several times this evening, is there a mask break outside at recess? And she, every single time said, no, absolutely not. So I will definitely check on that tomorrow because again, being at ninety degrees, I really don't want her to wear a mask. But I also don't want her to break the rules. The other thing that really bothers me is hypocrisy. And what bothers me when I saw a picture of school board members taking a tour of Arrowhead. And they weren't wearing masks and they were outside. Yet you're gonna tell the children to wear a mask? That blows my mind. And the fact that a board member asked to have seniors vote in and have a clap out. Out of their elementary, out of their elementary school. Is also disappointing. Parents can't even go into the school building. Why the heck would I ever want a bunch of seniors who are strangers to my children go in and have a clap out? I find that, that, that's just irresponsible. Um, so that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, so with that, we will conclude our courtesy of the floor. Um, I did want to respond to a couple of things that, um, questions that were raised. The pandemic team, there, there is a link to the list of the pandemic team members on the Methacton website. It is methacton.org-page-five-four-seven. Um, sorry, I don't have a, um, better URL than that, but, um, it is posted on the district website. It's under, if you're looking, um, at the site, it's under the roadmap to reopening Methacton schools. So that is there, um, for those who are asking about it. Um. I just wanted to say one thing, um, before moving on. I, um, I attended a, um, QPR training last night, which is a, um. Suicide prevention training. It's question persuade and refer, and it, it's an approach to, um. To suicide prevention that, that, um, you can be trained in and, and get a certificate. And it's, one of the things that stuck with me the most out of this program is the importance of connecting with people. Of when someone is, is struggling of asking them, not what's wrong with you, but connecting with them and asking what's happened to you? What's going on? Some of the comments that I heard this evening, I'm concerned that we are approaching a place where there are students. And faculty and staff in our buildings who may feel that someone is saying what's wrong with them. Um, I want to make it abundantly clear that it is part of my personal mission on this board and with this district. To be an inclusive place for all students regardless of race, regardless of sexual orientation, regardless of gender identity. We are a place of diversity. We are a place of equity and we are a place of inclusion. And I don't want any of our students, staff or faculty to feel that this is any different. Does anyone else have anything before we adjourn? Ms. Purdue?
I do have a few things to say. I know there were several comments on here tonight about the D E I task force. And there've been several comments since we started this initiative. And, um, I know there are people in the community that may think everything is okay within Methacton. But the task force really, when we think about the D E I initiative was started because, at the request of students. So our own very students, and I, I'm a parent within the district. I have kids. And so with the callers on there or our listener, our very own kids are coming back. Whether alumni or currently enrolled in our school are actually coming back and asking us that this is needed. They're coming back and sharing their experiences they're having when they're going on to college or working. And saying that this is something they wish Methacton had prepared them for because they would have to be prepared to work in the world with others. And they just did not feel like with everything that they learned, and I actually sat down with alumni that's enrolled currently, um. In the healthcare field, looking to go into medicine, saying with everything that Methacton taught her. When she think about everything she learned academically, she felt like we could have done a better job in this. So this is not something that came up. It wasn't a drive by Dr. Janine Darby, which has come back many times. And I've made the point to let them know within our own, before, when I first joined the board. There was a group of us that sat down to look at our strategic plan for the district. And I remember specifically, this was brought up as one of the things that we wanted to look at within our, our, our school district. Is how do we ensure that we are being more inclusive, that we are making sure everybody within our district, teachers, parents. Students, everyone within our district still welcome. And this is not just for the students, but there are teachers also within our community. There are staff also within our community that also need this. So this initiative is not just driving a one group of students or one group of parents or one group. It's really to ensure that everyone within our community, every student that walk within our door, every teacher that walk within our district. Feel that they belong within Methacton. And I, I personally believe it's something that we need, but knowing that our own, very own students that we strive to educate. Have come back and said to us that Methacton can do a good job in this aspect. I feel like it's needed and it's, it's, it's something that we need to drive to. One of the other items I want to talk about is a question or a comment was made about, raised about selection. The selection process was not something that we, we were part of or recommended or say, oh, we like this person, let them be a part. I sit on one of the subcommittees and I have to tell you, those individuals that are in those subcommittees, these are their expertise. When we talk about human resources and professional development, this is what they do full time. And they're putting in their time, each time that they meet with the D E I committee, they're putting in their time to be part of it. To really bring us the expertise that they work at every day to bring that to us. So none of those individuals are on there just because somebody liked them and put them on. They're on there because they demonstrated that they have the expertise to be part of this, um, committee. And so I just wanted to bring that up also. I do, I don't want to, um, dwell on everything I would say, but I do want to remind everybody as, um, as was mentioned. That we do have the vaccine clinic going on and I hope many people will take advantage of it. And if you have kids that are in the twelve and, um, older age group, please do take advantage of it. Just because if we want to talk about being in a position to now stop masking, being able to have our kids outside with our mask on or in the school building. That's the only way we can get there by practicing some of these things, vaccines, masking and social distancing is what has gotten us to this point. And it's what will prove to work. And whether the health and safety plan is not changing right now, as things are changing, the guidelines are changing every day with COVID. The administration is looking and pivoting and making those changes necessary. So with that, we will continue to do that. We will continue to look at how we in, in, incorporate those changes into our health and safety plan. To make sure that everyone that walks into our building, whether outside or inside our building feels safe also. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Purdue. Mr. Winters?
Uh, well said, Ms. Purdue. I just, uh, one, one of the questions was related to, uh, Mr. Rocco, uh, referenced a, a drop in students from August. To, uh, where we are today. I believe, um, actually Che or Jason probably could answer this. But I believe in that what happens is that the exiting students that are losing, that leaving the district are not necessarily identified. Uh, so they're in the school district at the end of June and they're expected to, uh. Come back into Methacton in the new school year and many of them leave the district for either moving or whatever. And we do get new, uh, students registering. So during the, uh, month of September, there's identification of students that are no longer in the district. So I think you would see historically that there's almost always a step down between the summer months and then the official number of October first. And I think we also have, uh, I don't know, I can't reference it, sorry. But, uh, we did talk about the number of students that we, there was additional students that left Methacton during this school year. And we've acknowledged that that has been done throughout the country. Not something that necessarily be proud, but I'm just saying that there's students that have left because the choices that were available. At the different times did not meet the students' need or the families' needs. So there were additional students that left the district, but there is always students that, um, leave for Germantown Academy or Malvern or wherever. PG, uh, PJP, et cetera. So the ninth grade attrition rate has incoming and outgoing. But collectively, there were more students losing, leaving the district and we're hoping that many of them. Uh, and budget wise, we assume that some of them that will be coming back into the district next year. I just wanted to point out, uh, the last point. I have no problem taking, uh, lots, lots of criticism. Sometimes it gets under my skin, I will readily admit, and sometimes I lose my temper and I get, start rubbing my head. I know all those things. But the one thing that I will not accept, I don't think there's any one of the twenty people that I'm looking at. On this, uh, face on the, on the team, um, Zoom, not teams, on the Zoom call here that you're looking at. There's not one of us that's anti-police. I will not accept any type of, uh, just drop. Of that comment to be unanswered, uh, for me or for anyone else. And certainly the circumstances and my family would not allow me to leave it to go unaccounted for.
I'm sure Joe appreciates that, Paul. Anyone else before we adjourn? Ms. Hall?
I'm not good. I just want to say thank you again to Nurse Cheryl Pfeifer for all of the work that she's put in, especially in getting this vaccine clinic done for us. Um, I know Jen and I, when we were in attendance at the Nurses Appreciation, went up to her and said, you are a rock star. And she really is. So I just want to send thanks to her again.
Agreed. Um, the work that our, our school nurses have done this year has been above and beyond what was ever expected of them. And, um, I have no doubt that they have kept numerous Methacton families safe and healthy, um, through their actions this year. So thank you to all. All right, anything else? Mr. McGuinness?
The most non-condescending obscenity-free way, I make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Mr. McGuinness. I see there's a second from Ms. Reese. Meeting adjourned. Have a good night, everyone.